The City Council Committee of the Whole will meet on Thursday, March 23, 2023, at 6:15 PM for the purpose of discussing City Council Rules and Orders, Section 26C, relative to public testimony during regular meetings. This meeting will be held in person at City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Mass., second floor. Individuals may listen, view, or participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom through either of the following ways. Click on the link, post it in the web on the agenda, go to zoom.com and enter webinar ID 88649933809, password 795537. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, a matter is not requiring a public hearing, we will post on City Asylum's website an audio or video transcript, recording or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. On tonight's agenda, we have City Council Rules and Orders, Section 26C, relative to public testimony during regular meetings. This is a Committee of the Whole meeting. We have Councillors Dominguez, Councillor Marsillo, Councillor Merkel, Councillor Cohen, Councillor Prozinski, Councillor Varela, Councillor Hapworth, Councillor McLean, and myself in attendance. Absent, we have Councillor Watsonfeld. We also have joining us the city solicitor, who may be, I'm sorry, the city clerk, Eileen. I originally put this order in as a late file at our last meeting, not really knowing what the conversation was going to be, but knowing that we needed to make changes to our city council rules regarding public testimony, as opposed to just having the conversation right on council floor with items that the city solicitors submitted. I wanted to have a conversation with her here. We scheduled the meeting for last week. There was a snow emergency put on last week, which limited the parking downtown, which I thought was not the best for a open public meeting and really limited those that could attend. So we had to postpone the meeting till tonight. Unfortunately, the city solicitor is out of state right now, so she is unable to attend and join in person. So that was the summary as to why the late file was put in, so we could meet outside of our council meeting and discuss. But we did receive feedback from her on this topic, so I can kind of provide my summary and insight that was provided last week. The shared drive folder was shared with all of you all, which had the new ruling that came down from the Massachusetts Supreme Court, I believe it was, that was the judging body, okay? And the recommended edits that were provided from the city solicitor with feedback to our public comments section that we have in our City Council Rules and Orders. Sorry, if you bear with me one second. So our rules and orders, which we should all be familiar with, right? Because we just went through and reviewed these at the end of last year. But Section 26C does talk about rules for public, for testimony during the public testimony portion of our regular meetings, that's our regular city council meetings. And they did have language in there that limited that the, those that signed up to speak could, or must indicate the agenda item upon which they wish to speak. We all saw the ruling that said that limitation of public speak is, speech is not allowed. So we want to remove that limitation that we have within our public comments. And since we're looking at it again, we reviewed to see if there are any other, I guess, spots within our language that we have in this, in this section of the rule that might also, I guess, put us against the ruling that just came down. So I will say all of this, but then also preface it by, this is new, and it was just, just a new ruling within the city, and there are lots of different opinions on this and what it means. So I think perhaps the first, the first good step that we can do is remove what we know is not allowed, which is limiting what the public comment can be, and also knowing that this can be fluid, and we might have to go back and make additional adjustments as well. So with kind of that summary opened, I wanted, I guess I can open it up to the floor, to the committee, and see what comments we have. I don't know if everyone has the red line version, or if you'd like me to put it up there for you. Okay. Is there anyone on the committee that has a question or concern to start off the conversation? Councillor McLean?
Thank you. It's unfortunate that the city solicitor is not able to join us this evening, because I had a number of questions I would have liked to ask, but my concern is that we make sure we have a really, really clear understanding of what is and isn't allowed in terms of what kind of structure can be put around public comment before we begin to remove I understand the importance of allowing the public to participate in public comments, and actually, I think if you, if you read the case about which this decision was made, I do think it was the right choice, because the behavior of the body in question, I think, was rather egregious, but I don't want to see our public comment period become sort of a Wild West situation and find that it has just the opposite effect of, I think, what the Supreme Judicial Court of the State would want, rather than allowing the public a good, solid right to come and participate in our meetings. I don't want to see it have a chilling effect on people's willingness to participate, because the comment and the interaction is so negative and unwieldy. So I really want to have a really strong and clear understanding of what is and isn't allowed with, with respect to the idea that the public is allowed to be coarse if they so choose to be. I also want to know exactly what structures may still be allowable in terms of content, length of time, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that's my main concern coming into the conversation.
Thanks. I will add that Beth and I have spoken about this numerous times, the city solicitor, and as expected, she's, she's noted that there are many differing opinions about whether or not we can control the subject matter and how. But one suggestion, or one, some things that we do know is that we can't limit the topics. That was pretty clear. But we can limit, or put guidelines around time and place. She felt confident on those continuations, but the rest of it, she, I don't even think if she was here this evening would be able to confidently answer whether it's black or white right now, as to what it is, because there are differing opinions as to what can be controlled. So we may go back again and, and have to revise again. I agree that, you know, we want to continue to have our cordial meetings and, and have good discourse within our meetings, but I'll also comment that the public comment meeting during the city council meeting is not a question and answer period. It's not a debate period. It's not something that we are to respond to right away. So it's, it's a platform for our residents and constituents to get up and make a public comment. We don't have to reply back. We don't really have to act on it, but it's, it's some sort of platform for them. And I think by limiting, or not limiting, but guidelines around the time when they can do that, so certain period on the agenda, the place, how they do that, are all kind of factual items we can do. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Stott. So I was not comfortable when this body, I don't remember, five, six years ago, decided to go to a 15-minute total limit on public comment. Prior to that, there, there was no limit. There were times when there was, depending on what was on the agenda, because back then it had to be germane to an agenda item, there were many times 40 or 50 people in the room, and the, I believe through the purview of the council president, there was times where we limited comment to a certain amount of time. And I know that when I served on No Place for Hate, we did that when we had 150 people in the room for the sanctuary ordinance. So I really don't personally feel that limiting the total time is, is democratic. I do favor if people know in advance how much time they would have to talk. I think people in general, I know I do, if I know I have three minutes, that I will be more concise with the comments. I do think that one other thing that came up in this judgment was that they, I think they used the word rude, that, that people could be rude to the body, but that there were some parameters about what people could do as far as raising their voices, or, you know, yelling at, at people in the room. So I think my personal preference would be to limit the amount of time that people have, so that everyone knows they have the same amount of time, but not to limit the total amount of public comment.
Councillor Marsillo?
Thank you, Madam President. So a few thoughts. I hope that in a future revision, we can add limits to public comment, that it's within the jurisdiction of the city council. And by that, I mean, I'm not trying to cut off anyone's right to get up and use the cameras, but I, I don't think it's appropriate for someone to come in and start reading from a book, for instance, because they've got a captive audience, and I'm not sure what's going on there. I think that this body can handle a more open dialogue from the public, with the understanding that I think in the agenda, it should also remind the councillors and, and remind the public that, that councillors can't reply to these comments at all during the meeting, because if they're not on the agenda, then it's an open meeting law violation. So like, this is, there's a lot of weird stuff going on with this particular ruling, and I understand it, but I'm not in agreement that we should limit, that we should remove the 15-minute limit, because we've added language. And we had this discussion last year also, when we went through the, the rules. It says that the meeting shall not exceed 15 minutes extended at the discretion of the president, or to a time definite by majority vote of the council. So we have, we have methods to extend the, the public comment period if there are a lot of people that, that sign up to speak, and we've certainly seen that previously when we've had zoning issues, for instance, or other, other issues that bring out the public. And I think that it's important to, to hear from everyone, and so I would not want to cut, cut them off. But I think that this kind of gives us some, some bounds on our agenda also, that, you know, we, we can't every meeting take up public comment for an hour and a half, for instance. We will, we will be here until midnight, not that that's a problem, we've certainly done that before. But I think we need to kind of figure out how this is going to work first, by adding the, the edits that were suggested to the limit of three minutes per speaker, with, and keeping in that 15-minute bound that can be, that can be changed at the discretion of the president, or by a majority vote. Yeah, and just, I, I just really feel like sometimes things, people get passionate about what they're saying, and we just remember, have, have to remember as a body that we can't reply to the public comment. Thank you.
Who else? Councillor Hapworth?
Thank you, President Stott. I think I'm in agreement with the Ward Three councillor on, on this. I think that in general, like, I cannot think of too many times, if any times, throughout my almost, my three and a half years as a councillor, when this would have been an issue. I think generally, folks come in and give their public testimony. I don't think limiting time is necessarily important. I can see a situation where something were likely to pass that night, and a member of the public could potentially come in in bad faith and filibuster an issue. But I don't think that's, that has never happened in the time that we've had, that I've been on the council, and I don't see that being an issue in the future, but I do like having that, that ability to, to limit that potentially. And for what it's worth, I think it's removing some of these restrictions around essentially the ability to be rude to, to, to your elected officials is probably a good thing. Like, I think this is sort of an American tradition to come in and, and if you choose to, to be rude to your elected officials. And I think that that's, that's something that, you know, we should, you know, we should have on here, and we should allow, sort of not limit the, the public's ability to come in and say what's on their mind for that day, within reason and within, within, within a good faith argument.
Thank you. Councillor Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. Yes, I, I agree that, of course, we want people to be able to give their comments, whether it's negative towards us or not. I do want to put the concern out, though, of public comment, if it ends up geared towards another person giving public comment. I, I want this to feel like a safe space for people to come in and give public comment. I don't want it to discourage people from doing it, because, so, as, as you said, you know, comments directed at us can certainly be negative, but I, I just have, I do have a concern. I know now with the ruling, we're, we're limited, and we can't put language to that effect, but I just want to express my concern for it being a safe space amongst the people coming in to give public comment, because I have no, I have observed that before, and I just want to express that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. I think a lot of that about what we can limit in regards to who the comments are directed to, or, I forget what the other piece was, really who the comments are directed to, or whether it's something within the council jurisdiction, language along that. Those pieces, I think, need some time to be fleshed out a little more, until we really hear everyone's opinion, I guess, and see, you know, find out what the other cities and towns are, are doing around this as well. But we do know the pieces that we should remove, because they are straight against the ruling that just came out. So everyone received a copy of the order that the city solicitor drafted for us to review. We can go through that, section by section, if that, there's no other general comments. So Section 26C, it starts with that the following rule shall be observed during the public testimony portion of regular meetings of the city council. Sorry. The first edit that we would be making in order to, the following rule shall be, so it's replacing essentially the whole section, and replacing it with, in order to manage public testimony in a reasonable amount of time before opening the public testimony portion of the meeting, the president shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes with each individual presenting testimony, which each individual presenting testimony must abide. The public testimony portion of the meeting shall not exceed 15 minutes extended at the discretion of the president, or to a time definite by the majority vote of the council. So that second sentence there, the public testimony portion of the meeting shall not exceed 15 minutes, that's, it was existing in our rules. The first part was where the edit was, so the president shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes. So say we have 20 people that signed up, the president will most likely do one or two minutes as a time limit for speakers. If we only have three speakers signed up, then I would say three minutes per speaker if needed. I think that's fair and reasonable. I think if getting points across in three minutes is a reasonable ask, again, not a public and answer debate session, but thoughts or comments on that from the committee? I'm seeing head nods, so I'm going to move on to the next one. So for the second item within the public testimony rule that we currently have, now this is the existing language, anyone wishing to present testimony at a city council meeting must, must sign up online, which thank you to the city clerk in her office for getting that online form set up, or sign a roster in the city clerk's office. So that's existing. We will be removing the line that says, "and indicate the agenda item upon which, upon they wish to speak." So we'll be striking that. We're also striking the sentence that says, "Roster shall be available in the office of the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting," just because it's kind of repetitive. So the sentence will now say, "Anyone wishing to present public testimony at a city council meeting must sign up online or sign a roster in the city clerk's office up to 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting." So again, that's language that was existing, we're just striking out the indication of the agenda item for which, which they wish to speak. Any comments or concerns there? Councillor Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. And just of note, if you go on the live agenda, and I know we haven't changed it yet, but the form's still, the sign up form, no, it's not there?
It's not changed, oh, okay. Oh, thanks.
It was changed that evening.
Okay, yes.
It changed the public comment, the agenda item column, it's still on, it's not online, I'm going to.
Thank you. Thank you. So the clerk just confirmed that that column is removed from the signup sheet. Also, too, I realize I skipped through the, the very first section of rules for public, for testimony during public comment, totally skipped over that line, because it's really small on my piece of paper, and that's, "Public testimony presented to the city council shall pertain only to items on the agenda of that day's regular meeting of the city council. The president may rule out of order any testimony on any other topic." We are obviously striking that in tighter section, so I just want to make that clear, especially to those listening along. So that's the current Section 1 of Section 26C, so we'll be removing that totally. So the new section is the next Section 1. It used to be Section 2, "In order to maintain, manage public testimony in a reasonable time before opening the public testimony portion of the meeting, the president shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes, with each individual presenting testimony must abide, two. The public testimony portion of the meeting shall not exceed 15 minutes extended at the discretion of the president, or to a time definite by the majority vote of the council." The second paragraph that we just spoke about, "Anyone wishing to present testimony at a city council meeting must sign up online or sign a roster in the clerk's office up to 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. The roster shall be presented to the president of the city council at the start of the regular meeting. Only those individuals whose names appear in the roster may present testimony at the meeting in question." So next paragraph, current Section 4 of 26C will be the new Section 3 of 26C, is, "Public testimony shall be conducted in an orderly and peaceable manner. Failure to do so may result in the president terminating the speaker's comment period." So that was the one piece, I think that was the actual wording that was used in the ruling from the state, that really the only thing we can say is that public testimony has to be orderly and peaceable, and in a peaceable manner. And then the next few sections, we're just striking totally, the use of vulgar, profane, and disrespectful language, we're removing that, although hopefully the public still follows that one, and us as well. "Ad homium or personal attacks on any person, whether a member of the city or council or not," we're also striking that as well. "Political speech in support of or in opposition to any candidates for public office in any local, state, or federal election," striking that, "and failure to direct the comments to the president," striking that as well. So then the new Section 4 will be, "The public comment period is not a public hearing or a question and answer period." Any questions or comments on those deletions? Are we all feeling good about knowing that we need to remove those? Councillor Cohen?
Is it appropriate to make a motion to accept those?
Sure. Make a motion to accept the edits provided by the city solicitor, just as just read. Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Merkel, thanks. I will, since we are talking about public comment, I am going to go to see if there's any public comment on this matter. We are on Zoom, so if you wish to speak, please use the raise hand function, or if anyone in chambers would like to speak, please make your way to the podium.
A little bit further. Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, Steve Kapantis, 23 Mysteria Street, Salem, Mass. By setting both a three and 15-minute time limit, you're competing with each other, and it actually turns into an arbitrary decision. So tonight, where there's only one of us, you said you can have three minutes, or if there's three of us, you can have three minutes. But tomorrow, when an important topic comes up that many people want to talk about, and there's 20 people here, well, we're going to give you one minute or two minutes. We need to be consistent. When you go back and you look through the court rulings, and by the way, I followed this ruling all the way through, I think, the council here will, if you don't know, as soon as the SJC made the ruling, within minutes, I sent it, as soon as this is on PDF, to the city solicitor and asked for this to come forward in council. She let me know that they were also following the case. But we need to be consistent. You can't set one time, manner, and place for tonight's meeting, and then change it for next week's meeting. It leaves the impression that you want to limit the speech when things are important. So you should really get rid of the 15-minute time limit and make it three minutes per person. I've been to many meetings, and outside of, like, somebody had mentioned zoning and the ordinance, sanctuary for peace ordinance, those were long meetings, and everyone had the opportunity to speak. And then my other concern is, I hear comments tonight about trying to restrict content. I apologize for leaving my hat on. I've been to a lot of meetings. If somebody's going to come up here and use what you may perceive to be vulgar language, or to be calling people out, not only are they not respected by the members of the council, I can tell you that most of the public automatically turns them off immediately. So if somebody wants to come up here and rant and rave, let them. As far as limiting the content, you can go back and read, it's limited. If somebody's calling for an action to happen, or using fighting words, those are the only things that this body should limit. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. If there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to make a comment, please use the raise hand I don't see anyone online. Okay, so I'm going to close, in a sense, the public comment request for Zoom. Any other comments or questions from the council, now that we have that motion on the floor? Any comments or questions on the motion? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Council President. This is an open question, to which nobody may have the answer, but how do these changes interact with our actual public hearings, where we are not talking about a public comment period simply as part of the agenda of a different meeting, but a meeting which is dedicated to the hearing of the public?
That's a great question. I've asked that one as well. This is totally different. This is not about public hearing, or even comments during, like, like the planning board, for example, in the ZPA, those are public hearings when the comment, when the properties come up and the comments come up. We have public hearings about zoning items. Those have their own roles that need to be followed, which are basically not, these are specifically just the council rules in regards to our meetings, the second and fourth Thursday of every month, that's it, because these are the specific rules of our council meetings, and we have it posted on our agenda that there will be public comments provided. So it's not public hearing, those are different, and different rules will follow. But I did have, the city solicitor can provide more feedback on that, but this does not affect those. This is just pertaining to our meetings. One other item, too, that I did ask, we can keep this motion, we can send it back, because I do feel that this needs to be changed. Like, we know we have some things in our rules that are directly against what should be done, but we could also keep, refer it back to make these changes and still keep this matter in committee, to continue to have the conversations if we feel we want to meet again, or like, before the meeting, and have the city solicitor, when she can join us, and have those additional conversations. You know, this is something that is new, and every lawyer probably has his opinion on it, so we can, we can do that as well. You know, we don't necessarily have to remove it, we can keep it in committee as well to continue to have those conversations, or we could easily put in another order as well, to have it come back to committee, but I want to note that this isn't like the be all, end all, this is going to be our rule for the next 20 years. I think this, these should be our public comment rules for the meeting right now, with the information that we have and the information that we know. Councillor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. I agree on the last comment you made. I think, you know, having this solicitor here and hearing so many public comments on matters, I think, makes sense. We need to put it in committees and maybe make sure that we have more opinion, and we can really, you know, have together a very good order that feeds all the foregone, so I'm in favor of putting it in committee for next. If it is a motion that I had to make, I wanted to make a formal motion, too.
A motion to keep the matter in committee? Yeah, we already have a motion on the floor for the amendment, but I guess we can say a friendly amendment to that, to make a motion, so we can move to send these edits back to the floor, but I agree with the So we can move to send these edits back to the floor, but I agree with the fellow good counselor, keeping this in committee is a good idea to continue the conversations. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Stott. So I do, I'm fine with that as a friendly amendment. However, I do want to address tonight's meeting. So how do we proceed with tonight's meeting?
Yep, so we'll, we'll keep your motion as is, which you moved to refer out to the council, the changes, and we'll vote on the changes at tonight's meeting. But part of your motion is to still keep the matter in committee as opposed to referring it out. Yeah, so same motion, but we want to note that we're keeping the matter in committee. Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. So I'm just not quite clear. Does that mean it will be changed?
Yep, we'll vote on it tonight.
Okay, so just to follow the state laws, then the changes would be put in place that we did. Okay, I just wasn't clear on it.
Yeah, so the changes that we just talked through and had the motion on, we'll report on those in half an hour, 45 minutes, and vote on those. But then since there are still kind of some outstanding questions and concerns, we can keep the matter in committee to hopefully invite the city solicitor back at a next date. Can we do that? Oh, we need a second reading of the rules. Yeah, so, but either way, yeah. Good. Any further comments or questions? We're good with the amendments from the city solicitor? Okay, so I will do, we don't have anyone virtual, so we can do a hand vote. All those in favor of Counselor Cohen's motion to accept the edits provided by the city solicitor to City Council Rule 2060 regarding public comment? All of those in favor? All of those opposed? I saw nine hands plus my own in favor. The matter carries. And to keep it in committee. Correct. Thank you. Any further motions? Counselor Merkel's a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Counselor Dominguez. All those in favor? Thanks, we are adjourned. We'll see you all in five minutes. Thank you.